Ready to go?
Yep, we're ready to go.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. The state is being held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231. It was properly noticed and has been posted and certified by the clerk. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hoffer Camp. Mr. Hoffer Camp.
Stapson.
Okay. Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
And Mayor Francis.
Here. Please join me with a moment of silent reflection and a pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we have a proclamation. And so I hope Chris is online. I saw him before. Yes, yes, he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you, Chris. This proclamation for Chris's Eagle Scout. Whereas Chris began his scouting career at the age of seven, he had been an active part of Troop 88 for the past 11 years. He's always been a kind, respectful, service-oriented young man who believes in serving his community. He is currently a junior volunteer at Moorestown Medical Center and also a volunteer at the Louise Child Library. And whereas Chris has a strong sense of duty and honor to himself, he's a true leader in his community as well as his peers. In scouting, he has taken on the roles of assistant patrol leader and chaplain. Through it all, he has always remained focused and steadfast in his goal to attain the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas during his volunteer hours at the library, he met with the director and discussed the potential needs at the library. Through these discussions, they came upon a need for a waiting and sitting area outside for library patrons. Chris immediately knew that this particular project was a good way for him to give back to the community. And whereas Chris started his project in November of 2019 and put in approximately 114 hours before completion. His project consisted of excavating a grassy area in front of the library for the creation of the landscaped sitting area. He installed a natural bluestone bench along with the two-parted evergreen trees. And whereas he displayed excellent leadership skills throughout the design and execution of his project, which was received with accolades from the library administration. Chris truly emulates what an Eagle Scout represent, and he takes pride in knowing his project will serve his community for years to come. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of the Berva Packon, hereby proclaim September 17, 2020, at Chris Becker Day. Congratulations, Chris, and thank you for your efforts. And you know, I always, I always, I'm just very happy to talk about our scouts and, and when I can do an Eagle, an Eagle Scout proclamation, it showed me that there's still hope with our young people. Scouting is so important. Actually, I'm guilty of lecturing sometimes about scouting and, and the boys at the market in Troop 88, the little guys, well, selling popcorn, they came back and I was talking to them about scouting and, and their moral compass, and they looked at me like I had three heads, but, but they, they do get it. And, and I am serious. It, it's not just the kids, it's the parents, it's the adults that participate in scouting. It's just so important. And, and all of our, all of our adults involved, that I know of at least, have the highest of ideals, and, and that shows with our kids. They're respectful, they're there, they're, they're already willing to help. And so, thank you again, and thank you, Chris. You make our town very proud.
Well, thank you very much for everything. I greatly appreciate everything.
All right. So. Let's go to committee report. We'll start with Dawn.
I don't have anything new to report this week, but I would like to say thank you to everyone that came or participated in the 9/11 ceremony. It was very beautiful. And thank Kathy Million. She did a great job organizing it, and it was a wonderful tribute and, and a day where we honored and remembered. So, I really appreciate it. Just thank you from all of us.
Thank you. Rick, you're up.
I would just like to thank all the MS and fire and police and DPW during these times. They're obviously doing a great job and keep at it, people. Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to say thank you for, to Kathy Million and everyone that helped put on the 9/11 memorial. It was a great memorial and very touching. You know, John Young did a great speech. Dawn, you did a great speech too, so thank you. Other than that, we have the final reading for some properties that are for sale or going to be auctioned, ordinances for tonight. I hope you guys will vote on them. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Dawn, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Chris. As I've said many times before, I was a scout, never made Eagle Scout, but you get a lot of memories that you keep for a lifetime in, in scouting. And I still have a lot of my scouting articles, mess kit, knife, axe, things like that, backpack. So congratulations once again. From recreation, as everyone is probably aware, all the parks are now open with signs indicating how they should be used, playgrounds, the hockey rink, both basketball courts at Modic Park are now open. Also from recreation, our Halloween event and costume contest without a parade this year is scheduled for October 11th from 12 to 3:00. And the Christmas tree lighting has been moved to Modic Park that, with Santa. That's scheduled for December 12th at Modic Park. From Municipal Alliance, we are doing a drive-in style movie night at the high school rear parking lot, September 25th. Descendants is the movie. I have no idea what that's about. I guess I'll find out. And from environmental shred day, Town Shred Day is this Saturday at the Senior Center from 10 to 1:00. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, you're up.
I'm gonna go ahead and follow on the coattails of John Young, and I'll start with the Sussex County MUA Solid Waste. As John mentioned, this Saturday at the Senior Center is our local shredding event. Friday is the shredding event up at the county. That's the 18th. The next one will be October 16th. The next e-waste event up at the county is October 17th. And our next Solid Waste Committee meeting is on October 13th. The next Water Quality PAC meeting is October 1st. And I guess I'll move on to the Chamber of Commerce. Lot going on at the Chamber of Commerce, some of it virtual, some of it in person. I guess the big thing is upcoming, the expo on October 29th. That's been postponed since June. We're trying to turn that into a virtual event. We're not sure if we're gonna be able to have a, an in-person event up at Crystal Springs on October 29th, but we are not moving the date anymore. So that's the big thing. The October B2B breakfast is a Zoom meeting, October 13th. The Young Professionals Trivia Night, however, is being held at Perona Farms on September 23rd. And the last thing, I really want everybody to encourage our local businesses to go to SussexCountyChamber.org and get on the map. It's a good way to advertise your business and make sure that everybody in Sussex County knows that you're there. You do not have to be a member of the Sussex County Chamber to get yourself on the map. Let everybody know about whether you're open or not, whether you've got walk-ins, whether you're available outdoors, whether you're available via phone, fax. It's a good way to tell everybody we exist. So, and I think that's all I have on my list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Jennifer, you're up.
All right. I just wanted to say congratulations to Chris. Eagle Scout is an accomplishment. I myself earned the Gold Award for Girl Scouts, and I know it's a lot of hard work. So congratulations on Eagle Scout. I also wanted to point out that we are paving, which is awesome. And, you know, just be patient. I know it's flora, you know, Francis is, is getting done. I know it was milled yesterday, and just be patient. It'll be beautiful when it's done, I'm sure. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Do the administrative report, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to, to tag on to Councilman, Councilwoman Johnson, yeah, we're paving, paving, paving. We're all over the map. We're, we're, we're off to the races. And again, I can't narrate more. Everybody just be patient. We're, we're good there and we'll get out. They're doing a great job. And we just make sure everybody's got the car off the road. We gotta make sure we can get through there. We don't wanna tow anybody. That's not our intent, but if you're in our way, we're gonna move you because we got a limited time to keep the asphalt plants going and keep us moving. So, and just a quick update, Mayor, on the River Sticks project. I'm sure everybody's asking why we put poles up and then turned around and took them back down. Unfortunately, the manufacturer shipped us the wrong poles. We have since taken them all down. We, the contractor, has taken them all down, sent them back to the manufacturing company in California. They're being remanufactured and redone to meet the appropriate dimensions that we need for our signs that it wasn't meeting before. So it's gonna put a delay in the project, probably between three and five weeks. There's no cost to us. This is something that the contractor, the state, and the feds are gonna have to deal with, and, but we, we getting it right to get back, and there'll be a fairly quick implementation of these. These things go up pretty quick, but unfortunately, they were wrong ones when we got there. So that process has started. Other than that, Mayor, I just wanna wish everybody to stay safe and please support all the restaurants. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to take a motion to open for a public comment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Rowley, you wanna call the roll on it?
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
And as, as I always comment, I limit it to one comment, no more than five minutes. So with that, we'll open it up, Ron.
I would, I would ask everyone that would want to comment in the public to please hit the resource button. We'll see the hand, and I'll acknowledge. Okay, here we go. Amanda, you're on.
Hi, Ron. Um, I'm just, I'm attending this meeting to follow up on the meeting from a couple weeks ago. No, on the, a couple weeks ago, about my property, 41 Adelphi, with the water issue and the flooding. Ron, I believe you said you were going to follow up with me. I am bringing this up again because I really need to find out what's happening with this because I need to move forward with my house. It really can't wait any longer. I know that you have the pictures on your email. I mean, I have a couple pictures to show on the video. I mean, it's really hard to see on this, but this is my basement from the last storm we had. It's over a foot of water. And this is the, I know you can't really see this, but this is like the, this is the backyard with the waterfall. Essentially, it's like a waterfall scene, and it causes flooding on the land as well. I do, I really just, I need to know what, you know, what the next steps are. I really just need to figure out because everything is kind of like at a halt with my house. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna start and like, and reconstruct and, you know, do my basement because I don't want it to be flooded again. So I just really, I need to find out what's going on, and I just wanted to hear the town's feedback if there was any talk about it. So I don't know if you guys can talk about it.
Mayor, would you like for me to answer it now or at the end?
You can answer, you can answer now. I mean, that's fine.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, you can't?
Well, Mayor, it's your pleasure.
We'll, we'll address everything at the end. Let's get through the comments and then, and then make sure we respond.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's all from me. Thanks.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stephanie Erwin. I live at condos at 5 West River St. 6th Road, and I didn't ask, oh, what, in the morning, they go 12:15 noon, they come back from, because remote from work. Oh, yeah, two years. So about that, and then.
I'm sorry, Stephanie.
Ron.
You look up, Stephanie. We're, I don't know what you said.
Stephanie, you're breaking up. You're breaking up, Stephanie.
Okay, I don't know what to do. Can you hear, is it, how's it now?
Better.
Is it bad?
Better.
All right, I'll go fast. The speed on River Sticks, they, they go fast both ways, in the morning and at night. I'm just noticing it probably because I'm working from home now. In the road and the building shake.
Stephanie, we can't hear you.
I think she's saying something about the cars going down River Sticks, that they're going down too fast and the building is shaking.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Can you give us time of day?
It's, it's commute.
I think she said it's morning.
And, you know, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock, and after, and then afternoon, they're coming back.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Hey, Mayor.
And Stephanie, where do you live?
5, 5 River Sticks. West, West River Sticks, West River Sticks.
Your condo.
Condos.
Mike, Mayor, if you'd like, just have her send me an email or contact me tomorrow and she can give me the information. Yeah.
The emails are important because that's a, that's a chain of documentation for us.
So I sent it to Ron, Mr. Tappan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Hi, this is Leslie Cole.
Okay, Leslie, you're on.
109 Francis Avenue.
Okay.
First thing I have is a question on check number 20-01318, posted 9/10/20. The line item of State Sussex County Sheriff's Office levies civil action slash Jesse and Son for $67,000. Can you provide additional information on this? On this fine item? The next thing is, I don't know if you're aware that there's an, I received a notice from Nextel that there's an enhanced program where people can sign up on their website and receive emails that provide non-alert information that'll be sent directly to their email. I sent, I can send a link to anyone that would be interested. Let's see. And tonight's announcement about the meeting I received on Hupac on Happening, I believe, and I thought that was great, and I shared that link, and I thought it would be really good if that was also sent out on Nextel. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Mike, I don't see any other reactions. Give it a few minutes if you like.
Yeah, I can give it a minute or so. I mean.
I know it's a slow night, so.
Yes, yes, it is.
We'll go back and forth in screens here, so we'll make sure I capture everybody.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Rick, you're up.
Yes, thank you. This is Rick Gary, 235 Hudson Avenue. First of all, I just wanna commend Mayor Francis and the council for everything that we're doing for Crescent Cove. My wife and I have noticed a significant difference. Every visitor we've had to our house since then has seen that's just been a marked difference between last year and this year. So we thank you very much for everything that you all are doing. It's tremendous. The question is on the sewers. I mean, we got a notice, you know, a few weeks ago, and we haven't really heard anything about the next progression of what's gonna happen of, you know, timing and, you know, what we all have to do to prepare for that so we can get contractors and the like lined up. So I'd just like to know, you know, just what the, the next steps are gonna be on that. And then there was a question or a statement a while ago, I know when we had a meeting, whether or not water was gonna be brought down the street as well at that time. So I just don't know the status of that. So again, thank you for everything you're doing. Couldn't appreciate it more.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Mayor, you're up.
Thank you. At the meeting where ordinance 21-2020 was passed, Mr. Ursin stated there was no legal reason why the council could not vote to pass the ordinance despite significant reservations by the public as to whether the borough, in fact, owned the portions of Riggs Lane in question. Despite many residents' objections and the pending title search, Mr. Schindler, Mr. Young, and Mr. Hoffer Camp voted to pass the ordinance to vacate. Conflict of interest accusations concerning Mr. Hoffer Camp still have not been addressed. Exercising good judgment, councilwomen Jennifer Johnson, Dawn, and Dawn Roberts voted to table the ordinance and wait until the title search was complete. Tonight, the council will pass ordinance 24-2020 to rescind this prior ordinance because, believe it or not, the members of the public were correct. Given these facts, I have several questions for the governing body. How do we confirm the property that we are selling is owned by Hupac Con prior to offering it for sale? Who takes responsibility for this happening multiple times? How much did it cost the taxpayers for Mr. Ursin to write an ordinance to correct this blunder? Would any of the council members leaning towards approving ordinance 25-2020, 26-2020, or in 27-2020 tonight offer to tender their resignations if it turns out that these properties are not owned by the borough as attested to in the proposed ordinances? If not, please explain to the public how the borough keeps finding itself in a situation where it has to mea culpa during to not owning, due to not owning the land it attests to owning. If this was just once, back when we sold PSE and G land we didn't own and that was not even in the borough, you could call it a mistake. Twice, if there was no process put in place to avoid this, it's an error. An error made more egregious if you consider that each time this happens, we have to pay Mr. Ursin legal fees from our tax dollars to draft new ordinances to rescind or correct the bad ones. And if you can't explain how this keeps happening, you do need to resign as you have failed your charges, good stewards of public land and public funds. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see anybody else.
All right, I entertain a motion to bring it back.
Bill made.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ron, would you address the 41 Adelphi Trail, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. We took the, our engineer, engineer, all my DPW staff went out there on Friday and looked at the entire property. There is an official record that Mr. Ruski is going to give to the Finance Committee, and the DPW Committee may already have that as of today. We have a Finance Committee scheduled for Monday and a DPW meeting scheduled for Monday with the Committee, and we'll review those recommendations at that time, and then I can respond back to the residents of that, for that issue that we've reviewed in total from both roads, all the area concerns, how the water's working, how we can maybe divert it at their house, those types of things. But the engineer is formally responding to that.
Okay. With Stephanie, please send us an email so that we can start that and visit the, the speeding in River Stick with our traffic control people. The, the meeting, the meeting notifications, I believe, are, are on our, the Borough website, and also the gateway for these meetings are on the Borough website. President Cove, in answer to Rick, Ron, when do we open the bids for the proposal?
Mayor, we've put out proposals for bids for the construction of it, and the official bid opening is September 24th, which is soon. And once we open those bids, we, we will select the official bid award. That goes back to the DEP for their official letter to execute. Once we get that letter of execute, then we can go.
Let's, let's keep our, especially the affected people informed on that timeline so they know. I'd really like to start working on that before, before next year.
Absolutely, Mayor. Our intent is to break ground long before, long before it gets cold.
All right.
Really cold, I should say.
What's, what, what meeting is 9/24, Ron? I'm sorry.
That's when we open the, open the bids.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
That, it's all statutory. It's gotta be X amount of days. When we open the bid and award the contract, then it's gotta go to our friends in the DEP, and they throw holy water on it, and then maybe we can start working.
So at 10 o'clock on the 24th at the Borough, I'll be officially opening all the bids. Right now, we have seven bids out, so it's been very well received.
That's a good thing.
It is.
Crescent Cove, yeah, the water, the water service, we, there will not be a water service. It just was cost prohibitive. The sewers are, are critical, so we're gonna proceed with the sewers and not the water. That was our, our final decision on that, and we will certainly try to keep you as formed, as informed as possible as we move forward with that. I'll, I'll speak to the Water Quality at Crescent Cove later. I've attended and, and had more meetings with the DEP. I'll, I'll address that later. John Ursin, tell me about property we're selling that we don't own.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm, I'm not really familiar with property we're selling that we don't own. In responding to Ms. Mode's criticism, I think her, her comments are completely unfounded. She has her facts completely wrong. In the first time that we were talking about the ordinance with respect to Riggs Lane, there was discussions about vacating property, and when we vacate property, we don't transfer it, we give up our rights to it, and the adjoining property owners would get it by statute if we own it. At that first meeting, there was never a discussion about the scope of the borough's ownership. That's a complete misstatement. What was discussed was the nature, extent, size, history of the easement that the neighbors claimed to have to go down to the lake in this area that's been described as the 35-foot strip, which I guess is a little bit of beach and some dock. which I guess is a little bit of beach and some dock. So the, the reality is that there was some discussion about getting a title report during that meeting. And what I said during the meeting is that I found it unlikely that anything in the title report would change the action the council was taking as it affected that easement. And those statements turned out to be correct. At that meeting, we knew the 1950s transfer of rights to the 35-foot strip to the four people. We were aware of the transfer from the four people to the Echo Cove Association. And the title search did not reveal anything new with respect to the neighbors' rights to the 35-foot strip. It didn't give us any more dimensions. It didn't give us any more history. It was the same 1950s conveyance to the four people and eventually the conveyance to the association. When we did the title report, we determined that the right-of-way had never been deeded to the municipality and had never been dedicated or accepted by the municipality. That's really a completely different issue. So the characterization of the ordinance that's on tonight as a correction, I completely disagree with. This is a completely different action. Previously, we were talking about vacating small areas of the borough's rights in order to accommodate the adjoining landowner. It turns out that we're not able to do that, simply because the title search showed that the borough doesn't have underlying title to that area. So tonight's ordinance is a correction of what's on the municipal tax map. The municipal tax map shows Riggs Lane extending past Oneida, down to the lake. And according to the tax search, that was factually incorrect and needs to be corrected. But it really is very much a separate question in the issue of whether or not the adjoining landowner could get a five-foot strip and a, and a one-foot buffer for the septic system. So, Mayor, I, I, without overstating it, I think the, the comments and the criticism are simply factually basis.
Thank you. I think we've addressed just about everything. Thank you for your input and comments, everybody.
Hey, Mike, hey, Mike. Mike, there was a question about some bill. I was wondering if Ron could maybe discuss that, because we are going to vote on it regarding the Sussex County Sheriff and 66K.
Yeah, I, I, if the administrator doesn't mind, I'll, I'll speak to it. We have a contract with the, the individual company mentioned on that line item, and we have received a writ from the sheriff's office involving civil process indicating that that funds, those funds, I'm sorry, should be paid to the sheriff. So we're, we're following the direction of the civil process issued by the sheriff's office. And it, it, it's, it's no, it's no financial difference to the borough because we would have either paid that money to the, under the contract, or we're paying it on to the sheriff's office, and that individual or company can deal with it at that level.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Rich. All right, approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'll move the, the meeting minutes from September 2nd, 2020.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution 2020, 127, approval of the bills list.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have anything they need removed or discussed? Not hearing or seeing any, Mayor. I'll move the bill list in its entirety.
Councilman Young, did you get the email from Lorraine of the addition to the bill list that we need to add tonight? It was for our auditors that we need to add to. It was, we've been working on it and couldn't, we missed the bill.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that one. I have a couple of additions to the agenda, but I didn't see that one.
Yeah, I didn't get that one either.
I didn't see it either.
No.
I don't have it.
Lorraine, you want to kick in? You're muted. Here we go. Hold on. There you go. Now you're up.
We don't hear you.
Oh, turn your mic up. It's for our auditors, and it was a last-minute ditch that she was working on, and we missed the deadline for the bill list. We need to get it added on. Is 20-01319 or 73? It's the bond attorney.
Is that $734 or $7,340?
Write it out again, Lorraine. We're on the fly here tonight, Mike.
That's all right.
It's for $7,301.97 to our bond attorney.
Can you say that again? $731. And what?
$7,301.
$7,197.97.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Young, if you could, add that to the bill list. I'd be so kind.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Entertaining motion on the consent agenda. It's pretty short. I think it's just two liquor licenses, if I'm not mistaken.
I'll move it. So move the consent agenda. Or second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Now, we're at ordinances. This is introduction. Ordinance 29-2020, capital, capital ordinance providing for the payment of the cost of the system and installation of an irrigation system for Modic Park and construction of a wall and Riddick Kong Fields by and in the Borough of Hapakcon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $18,500, therefore, from the general capital fund balance to pay for the costs thereof.
I'll move it.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Final reading will be what date, Valerie?
The 7th of October.
Thank you. This is the final hearing. Ordinance 24-2020, vacating Riggs Lane right-of-way. Ordinate further partially vacating Riggs Lane right-of-way in the Borough of Hapakcon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
I'll open it up for public comments or questions.
Ron, you're muted.
Ron, can you let Tom Hatton in, please? He's waiting to get into the meeting.
Mr. McGovern, you're in.
Thank you. May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just, just a few minutes to talk about this particular proposed ordinance. You may recall, I was at the last meeting as well. I represent 10, owners of 10 of the properties in the Riggs Lane vicinity who all have a direct concern and interest in their ability to access that lane. The, as we had discussed at the last meeting, and I think it was pretty clear, the only thing probably that was clear from the title report is that the title is unclear. There is, it's murky, it's convoluted. And so, so that the underlying ownership of the property, other than being in the heirs of, I believe, somebody named Matilda Mitchell, that the, what the absolute rights are of the people to be able to get through that lane is not so crystal clear. It's not like somebody filed a direct easement deed in, across that property to reserve something. And with that said, what you do have before any action was taken on Riggs Lane, if we go back to May, is that we had a dedicated right-of-way that, that was dedicated to public use at that moment. So there was no re, there was no question. Nobody really needed to do anything about securing some type of seal of, from somewhere, court or wherever, that there's a certain right in this property to be able to cross. Once action was being taken to vacate the property, that started to raise up these issues, because once, once, it's, we're not so concerned about Hapakcon releasing its own interests in this lane, but it's the relinquishment of the public rights in the, in the right-of-way that are of concern. Now, Mr. Ursin had mentioned at the last meeting, well, that it may actually be a benefit to the, to my clients, because at that point, you exclude the public, but perhaps reserve the private rights of way that go through that. And that may very well be true. It's just that the, the problem is that the research that we've been able to do so far, we haven't been able to yet reach a conclusion on that, and frankly, need more time to get there. We had asked at the last meeting that the introduction be tabled to allow that additional time, because this is a pretty complicated issue. This takes time. It's like a big puzzle to kind of dig into and to really fur it out, what the rights are and what they aren't, and to determine, you know, just how this action that you're taking tonight, or may take, is, may affect the people's rights in that strip of land. A lot of the people that live in that vicinity, you know, that live in there when they sell it, or the purchasers, some of them fairly recent, they bought it with the expectation that they would have this access down this section to get to the lake. There was value to that, to their property, to their use, to their families. And, and now that cart is kind of, it's wobbling and, you know, it's being affected. We don't quite know whether it's going to be, you know, adversely affected or not yet. And that's the answer we're trying to get. And what I would ask is, and again, I'm not, we're not complaining that you're rescinding the ordinance from last July. We don't really have a problem with Hapakon releasing its own rights in the property, which is like a quick claim deed, but the part where you're relinquishing the rights of the public into the, the road into the lane, that's the concern, and that's where really, frankly, we need a little bit more research to make sure what that means to these people's rights into that lane. And again, I've just asked, and I know you've advertised it at some expense for doing that, but I would just ask that you, again, consider adjourning this, tabling it to just allow additional time to be able to look more deeply into that. And then we would, of course, report back and let you know, you know, whether or not we have, whether we're going to be adversely impacted, and that perhaps you should somehow modify the ordinance or do, take some other actions so that the public rights are not relinquished, or whether we're fine, and that's, that's just the way it is. So that's our plea for tonight, is to please consider putting it off, even one more meeting to allow time to be able to, for us to dig deeper and to be able to come back with some answers. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see anyone else.
John, you have a comment on that?
We going to close to the public, Mayor?
Are we going to discuss this when we close to the public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One more look here, Mayor. I don't see any reactions, Mayor.
All right.
I'll move, I'll move to bring it back.
Second.
Call the roll, Valerie.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
All right, we're back, John.
Sure, Mayor. Look, I, I, I am, you know, I, I expressed before, I know Mr. McGovern, and I, I, I respect his opinion. And I think he and I have a disagreement about this. When we were entertaining the first ordinance in July, we were considering taking action that would allow the neighboring property to gain access to a five-foot strip and an 11-foot triangle around a, a septic system. And the, the neighbors came forward, and they were, they were adamant that, that they had rights to go down that 35-foot strip. I think the documents backed them up on the, the principal issue, which is, did they have rights to go down the strip? And, and we, we know from the title search that in the 50s, four people, at least four properties, were granted rights to go down and access this 35-foot strip, and those rights were transferred to this Echo Cove Association. So, you know, in July, to come and say that they absolutely had rights, and that even giving up five feet or an 11-foot triangle was, was interfering with their rights, the, the position is now that if the borough vacates this property, the rights will all be very confused or unknown. It's really a very inconsistent position. And regardless, here's, here's the main point for the council to consider. The action we're taking tonight is correcting the tax record, and that's it. Whatever rights there are, owners, history, inheritance, grants, transfers, that's all in the Sussex County Clerk's Office, and really does not involve the borough. And even Mr. McGovern's request that we delay this because somehow we could change the ordinance or, or give up the rights of the town, but not give up the rights of the public, we don't own it. If we don't own it, we can't give rights to anybody. So with the exception of either accepting it as a dedication or going through, you know, some eminent domain or, or some other mechanism, as we stand here right now, you know, the part of the title search that was not, Mr. McGovern's correct, there are, there are probably some, some historical property issues here that, that have some complexity, but they don't involve the borough. And to delay the action any further serves no purpose, because the borough doesn't own it, and the tax record should be accorded, corrected accordingly. Happy to answer any questions.
So then it's private property.
Well, I don't, given, given the complexity of it, I don't even know that we need to comment any further, except that we don't own it.
Okay.
And then the action that we're taking tonight makes that clear.
I just am questioning whether or not, or why, if this, if this was truly doing what it was doing, I don't understand why the Echo Cove Association would have a problem with this ordinance, with 24-2020. That's where I'm a little confused. Because at the last meeting, John, you told us that this was like vacating our rights to the property, and then Mr. McGovern is saying that we're relinquishing rights of the public in this, in this ordinance.
Well, look, we, 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 it's, it's a language thing. When we, when we talk about the government's rights, we talk about the public's rights, right? They're, they're not two separate things. We don't have roads around town. We don't have roads around town that the government has a right to and the public doesn't have a right to. We either, we either own it, or we have a dedicated right-of-way, or we don't. If we own it, or we have a dedicated right-of-way, generally, the government is allowed to use it, and, and so long as it's dedicated to that purpose, the public is allowed to use it. So I, I really don't think this is an issue involving the people who had a deeded grant to go to the 35-foot strip or the, the rights that were transferred to the Echo Cove Association. I can see a point that if some other folks from town got in the habit of walking down rigs to access this property, because it was public property, I could understand that that's a change for them. But that's, that's not who we're talking about, right? And, and regardless, even if, even if, Ms. Johnson, even if you said, you know, there was, there was two neighbors that had used rig, rigs on a regular basis to walk down there and access the 35-foot strip, and now we're saying we don't own it, what are they going to do? My answer is, it depends on the chain of title. We, even if you, even if we felt bad for those two people, we couldn't grant rights in that property that we don't own, have no. we couldn't grant rights in that property that we don't own, have never owned and can't transfer.
Okay, so this, doing this, having this ordinance, passing this ordinance, is removing our rights as the public, right, to that 35-foot dock that Lakefront property. It's also assigning a lot and block or whatever it is that's going to happen with this and putting it on the tax map.
Could, could I just?
Is it going, is it going to affect their ingress and egress to that 35-foot strip?
So I, I, if, if you don't mind, I would have just corrected the question a little bit because we are not removing rights. We, we're correcting the record to indicate that we never had rights.
Okay, all right.
So, so again, I'm not analyzing this from the, the perspective of the people who were granted rights to the 35-foot strip or the Echo Cove Association. By very cursory comments, Mr. McGovern is more than capable of, of analyzing that for those folks. It appears to me that those folks have exactly the same rights a month ago today and a month from now that they had when we started this whole process. They have rights that have made it into chains of title. Whatever those rights are, they're recorded in the clerk's office. And nothing we're doing has any effect whatsoever on those rights.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, because my feeling is again, they had, and I understood their issue with 212020, but I don't understand maybe what Mr. McGovern's issue is with, with the final hearing of the, of the passage of 242020.
Yeah, look, Mr. McGovern's last comment, again, it's not open to the public and I'm not speaking for him. But I think he was indicating that when we vacate the property, the, the, you know, there's, there's records and history that we know about, the kind of things we've already talked about in these meetings, the grant to the four properties, the Echo Cove Association, et cetera. Perhaps there's more historically that relate to the private property interests of people in that area. And, you know, I think his last comment was to ask for time to look into that more. Of, of course, what can I say about that? They're, they're gonna look into it more because it has to be straightened out. But at the end of the day, the part of the record that's clear to me at least, that I feel comfortable conveying to the, the council from the title searcher, is that the borough is not in that chain of title. Right? So we can't pretend we are, we can't insert ourselves. We could, we could do this action three years from now. It won't change anything.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? Hearing none. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm gonna abstain. I don't know, abstain.
Ms., Ms. Roberts?
Thank you for the detailed explanation, John. I'm gonna say yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 252020, auction of property, 32 Alexandria Drive, Block 70107, Lot 35. An ordinance of the Borough of Paccon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of certain property owned by the borough and not required for public purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Is this to open to the public?
No, this is introduction.
No.
Final, this is final hearing.
Oh, final hearing?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The public.
Oh, I'm sorry, open to the public. I, I'm sorry.
I would ask anyone of the public to please hit the reaction button so that I know that you're there. Mayor, I see none.
I move to bring it back.
I was here.
Oh, oh, here we go. Somebody didn't have their hands up. Where we at?
I, Mara.
Okay, Mara, you're on.
In the ordinance, is letter C says the borough does not warrant or certify titles in a property and in no event shall be the Borough of Paccon be liable for any damages or whatever. So if we checked out the title and everything, why is C in the contract or in the ordinance?
Whoa.
Mayor, do you, do you want me to respond to that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we haven't checked out the title. Most properties that we hold title to, we have obtained through the process of tax foreclosure. So, you know, if every property we went to sell, we went and did independent title searches on, it would, it would be a very significant cost. We place the burden of doing title searches on the buyers and we make sure that the ordinance makes it clear that the extent of our research in the title was the extent necessary to do the tax foreclosure.
Well, if you did that, wouldn't you know whether you owned it or not?
Uh, we would.
I'm going back to when you foreclosed on property and sold it to PSCNG and it wasn't even in the Borough of Paccon.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any recollection of that. But, uh, tax foreclosures are done in groups of 10, 15, 20, sometimes 30 properties. We do a certain level of title searching in order to satisfy the court who has interest in the property. The tax foreclosure closes out interests in identified parties. And when we go to sell a property, rather than the borough incurring the cost of the, of title searches, we put the burden on the buyer, which is customary in the real estate market anyway. So that that cost is shouldered by the buyer rather than the taxpayers.
And you're not responsible to correct any defects in a title even when they're found?
That's, that's why we put it in the ordinance, make it nice and.
So in other words, John, that, that's in the ordinance to actually save the town money and to put the burden on the buyer if there was a problem.
Yeah, a considerable amount of money.
Thank you, I thought so.
Just to, I don't know if I'm allowed. These are properties that the title search, they already have interested buyers in them and the title search has already been run. No, not yet.
No.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, the, the buyers choose whether to do a title search. You know, some, some buyers do a title search, some get complete title policies, some don't. They, they, they do it themselves. It's a very interesting world because, you know, 10 years ago, you couldn't possibly do a title search yourself. These days, there's a lot of resources. You can get into a lot of the clerk's records online. So some people choose to do it themselves. But again, you put the burden of that on the buyer, which is customary for all real estate transactions in New Jersey.
Right, but when you're buying a house, I would put a bid in the house and then I would do the title search on the house.
Correct. That's exactly right. That's exactly the scenario that we're selling properties here.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to check.
We just want to make it crystal clear to everybody that we didn't go out on the market somewhere and purchase these properties. These came to us in bulk through tax foreclosure.
Right.
I understand.
And, and, and right, John, to your point, it satisfied the courts at the time that these.
Correct.
Except that the ordinance says where the Borough of Paccon is the owner of the property. So you're, you're attesting to the fact you own the property.
Well, I'm not attesting to it. A judge signed an order saying that we were the owner.
Yeah, that comes out of Superior Court.
Yes.
So there's no question. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Rich.
I was just gonna say, I think that was a very good thorough discussion on this. And, uh, given the price of the property and everything, I think we should move forward.
Well, I, I think the other question is, we're sure we own this property.
I'm sure a judge, yeah, I'm sure that a judge signed an order saying that we had the right to foreclose on the property and list ourselves as the title owner.
I understand, got it.
It's done through the Superior Court. It's, it's not, it's not done by some real estate agent. It's done through the Superior Court, where the judge ordered.
Right.
What question? Call a roll?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance 262020, auction of property, 16 Tough Trail, Block 40306, Lot 2. An ordinance of the Borough of Paccon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of certain property owned by the borough and not required for public purposes and more commonly known as 16 Tough Trail, Block 40306, Lot 2.
So moved.
Second.
I'll open that up for public comment or questions. Hearing none?
We'll bring it back.
Second.
You want to call a roll on that, Val? I, I, you know, I, I hate to do all in favor on a.
No, no, we, we have to, we have to call a roll, so that's correct.
Call a roll.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Now call a roll on the ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance 272020, auction of property, 64 Roosevelt Trail, Block 40412, Lot 1. An ordinance of the Borough of Paccon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of certain property owned by the borough and not required for public purposes and more commonly known as 64 Roosevelt Trail, Block 40412, Lot 1.
So moved.
Second.
I'll open that up for questions or comments. Hearing none?
Move to bring it back.
Second.
Call a roll, Val?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Call a roll on the ordinance, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolutions, Resolution 2020-130, corrective action plan?
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-131, Lo Sap Contribution List.
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-132, Ordinance Castellations to Fund Balance.
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
All business? Hearing none. New business?
A question about two things. Where, I wanted to know where we are with the septic ordinance and where we are with the metered sewers. Those were supposed to happen in January.
The septic ordinance was still reviewed. I, I gotta follow up on that with Valerie because she has some experience in that. We do have a draft. And I'll circulate the draft to council for review and, and comments on it and see where we go with that.
Okay, and what about the metered sewers?
Metered sewers, I don't, I don't think that we even discussed that neatly.
Not lately, no.
No. So I, I don't think we've made a decision on that in water and sewer.
Well, that, that was supposed, the notices went out in December or January.
Oh, you mean, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You mean, the, the, all the properties have been metered?
They have, okay, great.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. I, I thought you meant in general, I'm, I'm.
Oh, no, no, no. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, all the issues are closed on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
On the new business, I have an issue. I have a request from our fire chief. We have a volunteer from, from the next town, I believe it's Andover, but I'm a positive Andover township. And, uh, and they want to know if they can command the fire department. I don't have a problem with that. He, he comes recommended by the, by the chief of the department. I think it's number two and also our, our department chief. So if no one has a, an issue with that, I'll tell the chief that it's okay to do that. But I wanted to bring that to council attention.
Yeah, Mayor, I would only, I would only add that I gotta take a quick look at the ordinance. I, I can't remember whether it requires the person to be a resident or not. But there's no harm in the chief taking the application and submitting it. We can, we can take a look at that when it comes.
Yeah, check the ordinance and if we have to make an exception, you know, and I say our ordinance are not carved in granite. And, you know, today, in today's day, you're getting volunteers, especially for the fire department. It's, uh, sometimes problematic. So when we get someone that's willing, I believe we should entertain that, especially if the department recommends it. So, John, you'll check the ordinance and if there's, if there's not an issue, we can move forward?
Yes, Mayor.
Hey, John, do me a favor. If there is an issue with the ordinance, let me know. Because I know there's people that work at the borough might want to join just so they can help during the daytime. So if there's an issue, let me know. We'll change that. I'll recommend it. I'll recommend to change it.
Okay, we'll follow up on that run. All right, any more new business? All right, I, I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, just a few things. October 15th, at 10:00 AM, we'll have the ribbon cutting for the solar installation, finally. We should be online end of this month. We'll have the ribbon cutting just to make sure that there's no hiccups in it. They're going great guns up there and it's, it's a long time coming. But it's, it's, it's gonna be significant to our town. The parks, as someone commented before, are open. The playgrounds, the parks. And if you see people there, or the kids, or your kids, tell them to please be careful. I did this. We were probably one of the last few towns to open our park. We're the first town to open our, our borough building because we could really have strict controls and engineering. But at the parks, we don't. And so we're gonna have to rely on everybody to, to make sure we, we, we do this safely. And I think that we can. But please, if you have kids or you know kids or you, or you go by, if they're, if they're socializing and they're next to each other and don't wear masks, just remind them to wear the mask. We're not gonna be perfect at this, but let's try to be, protect our children as best we can. We had people talk about Crescent Cove. I had a, I had a conference call with the DEP because the, the aeration system is, is working as expected. But remember, that methodology, which is proven methodology, is a two to three-year project to be completely effective. Crescent Cove was so bad that that aeration system, we put it, it responded beautifully, but not as well as I want it to yet. Because although the quality of water is very good, the, the bacteria count for the blue green algae is, is still high. It was high. The, the biological, the biological treatment I proposed is non-hazardous. Anybody that wants to mature a safety data sheet or the label, you contact me and I'll, I'll get it to you. Actually, it was a, it was a study done up in the Great Lakes with this very same methodology for Lake Erie. And it was shown that this is a very effective technology, uses no chemicals, no herbicides, no algae size. And it's effective for making water cleaner and purer, which is. And it's effective for making water cleaner and purer, which is really my goal for Crescent Cove. You have to know that this stuff that I look at, sometime when you read about it, it give you a headache. But what we're doing in Crescent Cove by design, especially whatever Blue Lakes, the, the outfit from Michigan that we're using, everything we do is scalable. By that, I mean, what we do in Crescent Cove, we can do in the entire lake, we can do in another cove. It's not so unique, that it's not, it can't be scaled up or scaled down. The bottom diffuser that we use uh, can be used in the entire lake if we wanted to. As a matter of fact, I still want to address the five hundred acres of dead water we have in the middle of the lake where there is no oxygen after twenty feet. And we're doing all this other stuff with the lake, and no one is breathing life into our lake. It's quite simple, and, and, and it's, it's simple physics. Just put some air into dam water and get our lake healthy again before it becomes a swamp. And so at the meeting with the D E P, as I expected, I'm not surprised, it didn't go over too well with them. Uh, they started talking about making people sick and what it's gonna do to ecology and, and of course, I came back, what, what are you doing with the herbicides and, and, you know, and what happened to my four police that went in to save a guy and were, were sick with flu-like symptoms because they were down in the muck? And I asked for a core sample of the muck, it never happened. And so it went back and forth like that, which was not a good thing for us because the state uh, wanted peer review. They, they, they said, well, we don't have peer review. Peer review means uh, in D E P language. Uh, well, did someone write about this in some trade magazine and review it? What the answer was, yes. They did write about it in a trade magazine. And it was, it was, had to do with Lake Erie, and these people were pretty prestigious biological people. And I, I wrote a letter to the governor's office, actually, this morning. And I can read the letter to you. And, and this letter was to Rebecca Schwartz, who was, who is a really nice person, and on the, on the governor's staff. And, uh, I also will send a copy to, uh, Jane Cohen, who is the senior advisor to the governor, because I believe the governor needs to know what's going on with this D E P, and I, I don't think that they do. And so I said, please feel free to share with the governor's staff. And that was the, the information about the Lake Erie project, peer review, if you will. I said, the lack of knowledge by our D E P technical people on this subject is surprising. I've contacted a few people in regard to peer review on the subject of safe biological methods to purify water, and it seems that there are proven technologies to satisfy and combat the H A B issues in Lake of Paccon. As you know, I oppose the use of chemicals in the forms of herbicides and algaecides because of their toxicity, and it is encouraging to see that we can address the H A B problem without chemicals. Please share with Commissioner McCabe so that she might want to discuss with her staff. To be nice about this with them was, was hard. I had to redo it two or three times because they, they're just exasperating. And so, uh, I have more to say about this in more detail. I will probably do a press release just so people know, and, and I have some bullet points, but I don't have a script. And so I don't know where that's gonna go, but if it doesn't go well, just send me a throwaway phone and some cigarettes and, and I'll be happy. But, but, uh, but I fully intend to, to keep, to keep, uh, uh, fighting for our lake, and you know, and what I say about the herbicides and algaecides is, uh, is, is really important, so important. In three years, the state has issued over five hundred, five hundred herbicide permits for Lake of Paccon. Twenty-three different chemicals. When you read the material safety data sheets and the labels, they tell you how dangerous they are. I've yet to have one person put a eyedropper full in a glass of water and drink it. And if they do that, I'll shut up. But, you know, they're not gonna do that. Three of the, three of the products used in our lake have glyphosate in them. Glyphosate is the active ingredient in Roundup. And anybody that's been reading to know what Roundup does, it's this scary stuff. You know, we, we talk about everything going on in the world today, and it's nuts, and the state is complicit in, in just adding this stuff to our lake, the rotted weeds are laying in the bottom, it's becoming a giant mulch pile, there's no oxygen, and the blue green algae thrive on this. So my proposal to combat that with non-hazardous biology, which by the way, is used in waste treatment plants, and they, and they, and they dumped their waste treatment plant right into the river. So please explain to me why these, or, uh, uh, these, uh, biological treatments could be dangerous to water, when in fact they actually make the water purer because they digest the stuff that hurt you, which is laying on the bottom and rotting. Uh, so that gives you a little background on, on, uh, our friends at the D E P who claim they, and, and at the call, I might tell you that, uh, I, I really should have recorded and played it back to you, it's unbelievable. But they, they, they talked about everything that, all the three million dollars they gave to the lake, but yet they don't talk about anything, not one thing that as a state agency has done to our lake. They expect everybody else to do it, or they throw a few bucks at you, but they think it takes them off the hook, and it doesn't. It's, it's, it's a state-controlled lake, and the product I'm using requires no permit, yet. They might make up a rule that require the permit, it wouldn't surprise me, but this product can be bought in any feed store interstate in New Jersey, been used for the last fifteen years or so that I know of. And so when we pointed it out to them, they were, that got their attention, and usually when you get their attention, they'll probably pass a rule, which wouldn't surprise me, but uh, we, we still have to be cognizant of our lake, you know, we're gonna be talking about, uh, stormwater, I sat at a, uh, at a seminar about that, you know, I'm not a tree hugger by any chance, but how we manage what goes into our lake is important. And that's why we're taking sewers offline, we're spending six hundred thousand dollars, take forty septics offline, and so stuff like that, you know, we stopped using grit. We don't use grit anymore in our salt because that when that grit, when it rains, it washes into the lake, it causes too many saltwoods. So we're doing everything, we're putting rain gardens in. It's not like the only thing we're doing, it's falling around with the lake. We're doing all this other stuff that, that's, that's smart to do. It, it's, it's good, it's healthy to do, and by the way, most of it does not involve chemicals. We're doing it as naturally as we possibly can. And so just know that, that, uh, you know, I feel a responsibility to our lake, with the entire west shore. If, if it goes bad again, we'll have more businesses, uh, uh, going under because of no customer. And, and also the quality of life, not only with the people that live on or near the lake, it, it's our town, our lake is our jewel. If we don't protect it, shame on us. So I, and I take responsibility for what I do. I don't want anybody else, and don't expect anybody else to do it for me. I take a personal interest in that. So when I speak, I speak from my heart, and I speak with the best interest of our lake and, and the people that live in the Paccon, because that lake is important to our lifestyle and our quality of life. But with that being said, our entitation, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
All right, have a good night, everyone.